Good evening, everybody. We're going to do the agenda review session for Wednesday, October 5th, 2016. We have ordinances on second reading, 601, orders to amend something that provides general orders of the City of New Brunswick, Title 10, Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 10, 416, stopping, standing or parking, Section 10, 1630. Schedule 26, no parking certain hours, alternate parking, street cleaning program, Townsend Street. Ordnances on first reading, we have none. Resolutions. 601, approved agenda amendment. 602, approved payroll. 603, authorized due fund for renewed tax sales activities. 604, approved resolution sending a hearing date for ABC charges to Golden Rail Club, 66 Eastern Avenue, Liquor Life is number 1214, 33057003. Hearing date, October 19, 2016. 605, approved request for annual holiday horse horsing carriage ride for 2016, requested by New Brunswick City Market, for free horse horsing carriage ride in downtown New Brunswick. Dates, Friday, December 16, Saturday, December 17, and Sunday, December 18, 2016. Time is 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., police extra duty. 606, approved request for street closure in use of Monument Square, requested by New Brunswick City Market, street closure located in Lincoln Avenue between George and New Streets on the theater side, for holiday tree lighting, showmobile, chili cook-off, and performers. Date is Friday, December 2nd, 2016, and time is 3:00 p.m. to 8:30 p.m., police extra duty. 607, approved request for use of city property, requested by Greater Brunswick Charter School, youth sports complex, the upper field, for use of field for physical education classes and recess during 2016-2017 school year, the dates September 14, 2016, to June 20, 2017. Time is 7:50 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., not pro ton. 608, approved amendment of resolution R.091610, reason to pay additional legal fees in the amount of $37,07184, with Department Law Firm LLC for special counsel versus the City of New Brunswick for Marvac construction, from 117,36807 to 155,23991. 609, approved Chapter 159 Buzzing Surgeons, County New Jersey Department of Agriculture, for summer food service program, the amount is $530,78925. 610, authorized purchase by Police Department, their program under the NASPO Value Point Computer Contract Number M.0483, state contract number 40166, from Shear Shaw International Corporation, one computer and accessory, not to exceed $1,612. 611, approved amendment of resolution R.171687, change order number five, Underground Utilities Corp., for 2015 sanitary sewer system improvements, project Phase 1A, specification number 89215A, amount $44,34282. Approval of this change order will not constitute an increase of 20% or more of the original contract.
Will constitute.
What did I say?
Will not.
I'm sorry, will. I'm sorry. 612, approved amendment of resolution R.101611, change order number three, Underground Utilities Corporation for 2015 sanitary sewer system improvements, project Phase 1A, specification number 89215A, amount $28,4650. Approval of this change order will constitute an increase of 20% or more of the amount of the original contract. 613, approved the resolution R.071638, reason to pay invoice for code 14209 for original images for the Admissible Court Copy Machine, we thought USA Incorporated. 14209, approval of this change order will not constitute an increase of 20% or more of the amount of the original contract. 614, approved work contracts and injunction of one bid to first immunerated trees for full tree planings programs of Tabardo Nursery Corporation, freight A, F, G, H, I, J, K, L, O, P, and Q, not to exceed $16,509, with Schitts Nursery Incorporated, freight B, C, D, and E, K, M, N, R, and S, not to exceed $18,189, specification number 56216P. 615, approved amendment of resolution R.061611, reason to pay additional legal fees in the amount of $1,05550 to Benedict Altman, Police Director Anthony Caputo, in the amount of Steve Milton, for the City of New Brunswick, from $13,0041350 to $14,969. 616, authorized purchase by Department of Administration under state contract number 87961, says G8024, compact excavator, 51 and a half blade, from Gatorsburg Equipment Company, for one Kubota U554R3 excavator, pitching bucket with cutting head, not to exceed $58,295. 617, approved work contracts for first delivered sporting goods for Division of Recreation and New Services System with PSN Sports Incorporated, not to exceed $17,37485, with SNS Worldwide Incorporated, not to exceed $4,088966. Twelve-month period commencing October 6, 2016, and ending October 5, 2017. Specification number 53116P. 618, approved a member of resolution R.021635, reason to pay outstanding invoices in the amount of $12,000 for reward utility, with Sal Electric Company Incorporated, for electrical maintenance and repairs, services not exceed $12,000. Approval of this change order, approval of this amendment will not constitute an increase of 20% or more of the amount of the original contract. 619, approved member resolution R.091616, to pay additional legal fees in the amount of $1,0150 to Benedict Altman, for Detective Brant Regus in the matter of Derek Dietrich Stallings versus the City of New Brunswick, from $7,151, $3,16250. 620, approved resolution authorized application, acceptance, and execution of arts granted agreement with County Municipal Cultural and Heritage Committee, for art at City Hall, amount requested 2,500, City matches 50% of the amount received. 621, approved execution of annual 120 agreement with United States Department of the Interior, US Geological, Geological Survey for New Jersey Water Science Center, Water Resources of West Virginia, not to exceed $16,900, not pro ton. 622, approved relaxation of the City of New York ordinance, requested by Seventy College Avenue LLC, to accelerate the work schedule toward project completion, Rutgers Hill Student Center located at Seventy College Avenue, date Saturday, excluding holidays, October 8, 22, 29, November 5, 12, 19, and November 26, 2016, time is 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. 623, approved amendment of resolution R.041638, reason to supplemental funding for a junior consulting firm in the amount of $8,000 to CME Associates, for City of New Brunswick for Marvac Construction Corporation, Rep. should add in area storm shore improvements from $30,000 to $38,000. 624, approved relaxation of City of New York ordinance, requested by Lucero and Mendez Construction LLC, reason to replacement of the city area of concrete sidewalk in front of 25 Corbattook Street. Dates are Saturday, excluding holidays, October 8, 15, 22, 2016, time is 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. 625, approved amendment of resolution R.071523, change order number one, credit final, with S. Brothers Incorporated, Carmel Road improvement, specification number 855-15, credit dollars $32,63720. Approval of this change order will not constitute an increase of 20% or more of the amount of the original contract. 626, approved amendment of resolution R.071689, change order number four, final, with Black Rock Enterprises LLC, Handy Street Storm Sword Improvement, specification number 882-15, the amount is $26,900. Approval of this change order will constitute an increase of 20% or more of the original contract. 627, approved work contract with Project Blodging LLC, doing business as Red Carpenter Inc., for emergency housing shelter, 12-month period commencing October 6, 2016, and ending October 5, 2017, and thereafter for an additional 12 months, should the city so desire. 628, approved work contract with Remedy Analytics Incorporated, for prescription claims, analytics, technology, term, 12-month period commencing October 6, 2016, and ending on October 5, 2017, and thereafter for an additional 12 months, should the city so desire. Specification number 55816RFP, fair and open. 629, approved appointment of council, Christopher Adams, Escobar Adams, Buchanan, and Paulo Incorporated, LLC, I'm sorry, for representation of Thomas A. Lachlan III, City Administrator, in the amount of Arthur Anderson, for the New Brunswick punitive damage charge, not to exceed $7,500. 630, approved relaxation of the City of New York ordinance, requested by Turbo Services of New Jersey Corporation, credit for removal of an HVAC unit at 204 Neosmith Street, date Saturday, October 15, 2016, ultimately to Saturday, October 22, 2016, time is 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. 631, authorized tax weapon to transfer credits on several tax utility, tax and utility accounts. That's it? Clerk, please call and roll.
Counsel? Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Escobar?
Here.
Council Vice President Fleming?
Here.
Council President Egan?
Here.
Councilmember Garlotti is absent.
Please be advised that the notice requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act have been complied with and satisfied without the annual notice, which gave sufficient notice of the time and place and conduct of all public meetings in the municipal council for the City of New Brunswick, has been filed with City Clerk, has been placed on the appropriate board of the board in the lobby of City Hall of New Brunswick, New Jersey, and has been transmitted to the official newspaper for the City of New Brunswick, namely the home news. Please stand and play the lead.
I applaud the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you again. We'll have a moment's silence for all our men and women serving in our armed forces, for all our men and women in armed forces who lost their lives in conflict without... We have no minutes tonight to through, if I'm not mistaken, to go right into ordinances on second reading. 601, orders to amend something that provides general orders of the City of New Brunswick, Title 10, Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 10, 16, stopping, standing, or parking, Section 10, 16, 30. Schedule 26, no parking certain hours, alternate parking, street cleaning program, Townsend Street. Would anybody from the public like to comment on this particular ordinance? Anybody like to comment on this particular ordinance? Seeing no one for that.
Motion.
Vote call.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Council Vice President Fleming?
Yes.
Council President Egan?
Yes. We have resolutions 601 to 630. Would anybody from the public like to comment on any of the resolutions this evening? Anybody from the public on the resolutions, please step right up, sir.
Good evening, members of the council. My name is Charlie Cradville, I'm the editor of the New Brunswick Today, for the New Brunswick, saying I'd like to ask about number eight. This Samarvac case keeps going up and up, we're at $155,000 now, and I also see 23 is also related to the same case, and your friends at CME are getting, they're 38,000 dollars for them. Can you explain why CME needs more money now, after this has been done?
I read the letter, but I'm sure Mr. Shamy, they need more money because they think the hearing was going to go on as long as it has. They've used up all the time that they have allotted for the first 30,000, as you will. This is a case that I've asked about, and you know, Mr. Shamy, Mr. Lachlan feel very adamant that we're doing the right thing in fighting this case. You know, we're competing suit or whatever for in excess of over $2 million or so, and they believe that the fight is well worth what we're doing, and the money we're spending is well worth it. I didn't mean to speak for them, but I'm the speaker here, so if there's guy to let to comment on anything I've just said, feel free.
Mr. Council President, members of council, I advised the council when we first started the defense of this matter that it was going to be expensive, and I think this is maybe the third or fourth time that I said that the bills will continue. We're not, we're not done with the hearing, the hearing is supposed to go. Four or five days, I think they're on the 10th day now, and there's more dates scheduled in November, unfortunately. So, it's taking a lot longer than anticipated, which time is money in this type of defense business.
Would Congress, would that also be the reason why the CME bill?
Yeah, CME was with the design engineers on the project, and they're a necessary part to the defense because they are involved in defending the action because of the fact that they were part of the actual design and carrying out the project. And their testimony, Mr. Coates, who's one of the engineers of CME, who's instrumental in our defense, has all the facts and circumstances upon which we canceled the contract with Marvac, so he's a necessary part of this. And since it's gone on longer than anticipated, I used to, if you indicate it.
Right, and we also have, this is an arbitration hearing almost, we had to pay for the arbitrator or our portion, which we also did, and that's final hearing, once the arbitrator decides, don't want to kind of fuel the hearing or anything.
No appeal to Superior Court or anything like that, this is not, this is a finding arbitration proceeding, so we have one shot at defending this.
Okay.
And the AAA arbitration penalties, we split with the other side, and they're expensive too, and you'll see more of that, unfortunately.
Yes, I believe we paid one bill already.
We did, and there's, there's a mountain of bills.
Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Cradville, on that?
Yes, I'm intrigued here, so the case, are these hearings open to the public?
I don't believe they are, but I'm not at a hearing, so it's, it's not like a court of law across the street.
Right, okay, well, I'd be curious to know, because I would like to attend these hearings, if there's so much of the taxpayers' money being expended.
Is there a way we can find out if they're attended by the public, Mr. Shamy?
I can, I can find that out.
We can find that out for you, Mr. Cradville. Then we'll get back to you somehow, somebody will let you know.
Okay. Do you know the date of the next hearing, the location?
Well, all hearings are being held in Somerset, Adam Davidson Avenue, I forget the exact address, that's where the AAA arbitration company has their offices, but I don't know the date off the top of my head, you can get that as well.
We can get you that as well.
Okay, thank you. I hope that the city wouldn't be trying to keep, keep a lid on this, or keep this from being public, because obviously that's, that's what the courts are for, so I'm just saying...
We can keep a lid on it, we're, we're trying to...
Well, the public's excluded from the hearings, doesn't it?
He just told you, he's not involved, it's a binding arbitration here, no one's, we know it's knocking, knocking the public out.
The arbitration provision is in the contract, so we're bound on the arbitration provisions in the contract, we didn't have a choice to go into court. I would prefer to go into court personally, because it would have been a lot cheaper, maybe longer, but...
That's not the way the contract was written.
No. So, the original contract had a provision that said this, is that?
Finding arbitration.
Is that standard practice for the city, or is that unusual?
Standard practice with engineer, AI, or contract.
Yes.
Engineering contracts, it's normal. Interesting, so I, I hope I can attend. I'm also concerned about a number of other legal matters here, I see more legal bills in the case of Dietrich Stallings versus the city, has this, anybody been able to find out more information about this case? I asked about it the last time there were bills.
Still in the discovery, we don't discuss the details of the pending litigation, but I can't, I can't advise that it's still in the discovery.
Right.
Thank you.
And so that's, just to be clear, the defendant in that case is Brant Regus, and he's a detective that has been complained about numerous times by members of the public here on this microphone, and also, I believe, in internal affairs matters, and I believe in other lawsuits. So, is the city doing anything to track which officers are causing lawsuits, or defendants in lawsuits that are filed with the city defendant?
Anybody want to answer that?
The city has an obligation under statute to defend an officer who's charged with civil, in a civil suit or performance arising out of his duties and responsibilities as a police officer. This particular representation is with respect to the punitive damage claims that have been filed against officers. As far as maintaining, I mean, we know cases that obviously involve police officers, because as they come in, we send them out for defense, I mean, it's part and parcel of our obligation to our police officers. As far as any issues or corrective action that would have to be taken relative to an officer's conduct, now that's with the internal affairs offices with the police department. Obviously, if there are complaints brought to their attention, they go through that process over there.
Thank you. Okay, so I'm curious, if a complaint is brought instead of the internal affairs, but to the county court, federal court, what's the procedure?
Mr. Cradville, you're way off the subject here, we're trying, what has happened to many of the resolutions, I don't know.
Allow me to explain, there's a theme in these resolutions, many of them...
There's a theme, okay, we have to get to the, to the, you want to know about the bill from the lawyer, that's what we're talking about, you're taking it, you're taking it for all other levels, that's not involved with the resolutions. So, stick to the resolutions, please, on the resolutions.
All right, forgive me for using logic and actually...
That's okay. We might have to, it's a really hard one.
Yeah, right, I know, we shouldn't be thinking about patterns or, or things that might be cause for concern here, but actually, I think we should. So, there's a number of lawsuits on this agenda, right? So far, I haven't even named the last one, so there's, there's these different lawsuits, and obviously, this is not an unusual thing on your agenda, is every council meeting, we're more legal bills, more legal bills, more legal bills, and so I'm just trying to say, what can we do to prevent that? And I'm saying, not only is it more legal bills every time, but ultimately, it's the same defendants, so Detective Brant Regus is responsible for many cases being brought against the city, and therefore, many, many, many legal bills that you're paying with the taxpayer.
I don't know, how, how many, how many of you involved with Officer Regus? I think one or two, why are you making it sound like there's 10 against the blue officer? Just let me just tell you, Mr. Cradville, just look at the history...
Can you tell me how many there are?
Look at the history, I'm speaking, the history is, we're always going to have this, there's always going to be something involved with the police that we're always going to represent, there's always going to be someone offering plate, it will, it will never cease, it will never cease, it will never cease. I'm not saying it's right or wrong, but we've been, Mr. Compton's been here for how many years, I don't know of any meeting where we weren't paying a legal bill representing a police officer in the City of New Brunswick. It's, it's just part of, a part of doing business here in the city.
Ooh, boy, so...
Why is that bad? There's, people have, there's, there's a lot of false claims against police officers, it's, it's back and forth, I mean, it's always going to, it's always going to happen that there's, there's going to be complaints on the police department in the city, it's just a fact.
So, things are working backwards here in New Brunswick, that's obvious to me, because nowhere else would, would the city council president ask me how many times Brant Regus has been sued? Can you please ask your attorney, or your police captain here, how many times Brant Regus has been sued, instead of me?
You said there was many, many, many times he's been sued, how many times has he been sued?
I don't know how many times, of course.
More than five.
I, I don't, you can check that, I don't know off the top of my head, but I certainly don't think so.
Okay.
But, okay, this is the nature of the society, unfortunately.
Correct.
I think, I think we need some changes then, because this is not cool, this is really ridiculous, that Mr. Shamy says he does keep track of the cases, because he sees the cases, and he handles getting the legal bills paid, and handles these attorney bills. I simply ask, well, what happens when an officer is sued? How does that work? Do you communicate, do you invest as a law department investigator, or does I investigate? And now I'm learning that apparently, nobody's even keeping track of how many times individual officers are sued, so no one in this room, at least, has kept track.
We did say no one's keeping track, we just don't know how many times the guys, we don't know the answer.
Okay.
The guy's saying we're not keeping track.
Are you going to check on that, since you had that question for me, sir?
Sure, I, we'll find that, we'll find that, we'll, we'll get you down the information.
Okay, and I hope you'll, I hope you'll actually get the number for yourself, for your own good, because you should know this, these are city employees, and I think a little later, you're going to hear about city employees who, you know, are causing more problems, so like, you've got to keep an eye on this, if, if they're being sued over and over again, that is cause for concern, is where I'm coming from. And the last one is another lawsuit, this is against, I guess, news media, Mr. Lachlan's a defendant in the case brought by Arthur Anderson, refresh my memory, what's the nature of that case, and why is Mr. Lachlan getting an eternal, with taxpayer money?
Mr. Shamy?
This case is a lawsuit filed by Mr. Anderson and two others, who are claiming that they weren't promoted, or they were passed over, or retaliated against for political or other reasons. And in the context of this particular lawsuit, Mr. Lachlan has been not only sued in his official capacity, but personally as well, punitive damage claims against him. And the city has an obligation to defend its officials, its employees relative to a punitive damage claim such as this, and that's what this resolution comes.
Thank you, Mr. Shamy.
Thanks. I appreciate the ask, could you tell me where, what's the, what stage is the case at? Is it still discovering?
It is very much still undiscovered.
Okay, thank you, I'll just close by saying, you need to open your eyes, open your mind, and look for the pattern, see the pattern, if there's really, really a problem here, and don't count on the public to bring it to your attention, I, I'll keep trying to do that, but the problem is obvious, you need to look into it.
Thank you, sir, thank you. Anybody else on the resolutions this evening, anybody on the resolutions? Resolutions? Seeing nobody?
Motion.
Yes.
Vote call, please.
Council Andes, Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Council Vice President Fleming?
Yes, to the State of 15.
And Council President Egan?
Yes. We'll now move to the public portion of the meeting. Everybody would like to address the city council, you have five minutes, please step up to the microphone. Step right up.
Good evening, once again, Charles Cradville in Brunswick, I have to say, I'm very disappointed that the council did not choose to address anything as a valuable discussion tonight, in particular, because the city has gotten another water quality violation. Given the track record, sir, why didn't you think this was important enough to bring up tonight?
Who said we weren't bringing it up? Meeting's not over yet.
Okay, well, I see the last item is public discussion, so...
We were well prepared to talk about it.
Really?
Have we ever had a meeting, sir?
I wish I could say no, but...
The answer is no. Would you like to know about the, was there a question in here? What would you like to know, sir?
Yeah, do you have a response to the DEP saying you violated the law again?
We'll have the water director speak on it, please stand, sir.
Thank you very much. Well, hopefully, I'm prepared to answer this in a satisfactory method. Of course, I believe we're referring to the trihalomethane notice of violation that we received for that. You know, trihalomethanes are a, are a health concern, but compared to other health concerns that are out there, such as chronic diseases and acute diseases that can occur in drinking water, it's often one that's not as high on a priority, because obviously, our highest priority is to provide, say, drinking water, you know, for the entire community that's disease-free and bacteria-free, and you know, as clean as we possibly can. And the, the way we achieve that is through a sedimentation purification process of the water, a filtration process that occurs after that, and then we add chlorine to, to the water. And as you're well aware, we've had issues in the past with things such as turbidity, which is part of the clarification process that I believe we've aggressively addressed. We've also had issues with chlorine contact time, which was a violation, okay? And the creation of trihalomethanes are multifunctional, it's, it's a function of the total organic carbon that's in the water, okay, that's naturally occurring in, in any body of water, because, you know, it's a river, leaves fall in it, trees fall in it, there's, you know, it's not in a concrete pipe when it, when it comes through the river. Another big function is the amount of time, right, that chlorine is in contact with, with the carbon that's in the water, naturally occurring, and, you know, a huge factor also is temperature, okay? And we certainly experienced some very dry weather this summer, we experienced some very warm temperatures, some of the highest recorded temperatures coming out of this half that we've ever recorded. And these are all issues that, you know, we really don't have control over, you know, what the temperature is, is going to be, we have to deal with what we, you know, deal with and make the best order that we can. The testing procedure, okay, really for this particular chemical started back in 2001, okay, and what they used to have, multiple sites throughout the city, they would take all the sites, add them together, average them out, and that was the number. Okay, back in 2012, they came into the second stage of the testing, okay, which was to look at individual sites, and these are sites that are going to have the longest amount of time in the system, okay? So, you're looking at dead ends, you're looking at, at areas where water's not flowing or moving, moving by, where it's sitting for the longest amount of time, because the goal is with trihalomethane testing, is to find the highest concentrations that you can, we're actively out there searching for the highest numbers that you can. What they also did, so they picked these new sites, but instead of averaging the entire city together, okay, which is the water that the vast majority of people are consuming, they want to know what the highest number is, and they base it on that average, okay, that one particular spot, okay? And in this case, okay, we had a relatively warm spring, where we had some high numbers in three of our sites, and then true the form, come August 9th, you know, which is our regular scheduled testing day for that, the numbers were high again. Now, they were high... scheduled testing day for that, the numbers were high again. Now, they were high, not only for us, they were high for Middlesex Water, which we take the water out of the same water source. I mean, these numbers were across the board, but we, we had an issue with the spring numbers. So, I think the biggest thing is to ask, what are we doing to address this problem? Okay? And I believe that if you recall, we have, we put ourselves in the revolving fund for some major plant upgrades, particularly with our sedimentation basins. We are in the queue for that. We're also, you know, expected to begin the design phase of what that project's going to be. And, you know, the city's being very proactive when it comes to addressing this issue.
Right. So, it's true that the city's known about this since August ninth? Is that correct?
Yes. I mean, not since August ninth. The sample, when the actual sample was reported, okay? Like every other sample, okay? And anytime anything goes out, and then hopefully, we're all aware of this. Any result that's taken out and sent to a lab, okay, as soon as they have the result and we're ready to report it, before it's reported to the city, okay, the first place it goes is to Water Watch. And so, it immediately goes up, whatever the date is when it was posted on Water Watch. So, that's out there for everybody's knowledge to look and to know it. You know, you follow what I'm saying? So, then, DEP, once they have it, now it has to go through their system, and then they're gonna send us a notification. And then, that notification, that starts a time clock with us in order to get out a, what they call a tier-two public notification, okay, which we put that up on the web today. We're in the process right now of working with the printing company that does our consumer confidence reports to get it out to every single person in the community. We hope to have that up and out by October fourteenth. So, you know, transparency is particularly, an issue like this, is laying it all out and getting into the details of what's in a tier-two. Again, I would recommend that you read the tier-two and understand, which kind of gives you a little bit of an understanding of, you know, this is not an emergency, it's not a crisis, but it's an issue that we are aggressively looking into.
Thank you. I did see that on the website. Can I ask, when you say every single person in the community, you mean that New Brunswick customers are gonna receive it, or are you also sending it to the customers in Milltown and Franklin?
Yes, as a matter of fact, we're meeting with Franklin and Milltown, personally, one-on-one, to meet with their representatives, to give them the tier-two notification, and also to provide them with the copy of what we had on our website, which was a really detailed explanation. I thought it was a very good detailed, well-written article, so...
And so, it'll be mailed to the customers in Milltown and Franklin? Or that's up to the towns?
Excellent. That is up to them, and that's what they have to do as well. Okay? Our, our duty as a provider is to give that information to them. Okay? Then, it's up to them in how they're gonna distribute it. It's funny when you sell water to different communities with trihalomethanes, okay? They also test for trihalomethanes. So, we could be selling water and be in total compliance, okay? Remember, this is about time, how long the water's sitting in the system. So, we could sell it to another community, and in a far-off area that they have as a sampling site, they could actually develop trihalomethanes then. You understand what I'm saying? So, a trihalomethane is, you know, it's chlorine and it's a carbon atom. And eventually, okay, they're always gonna get together, okay? And you're gonna create a trihalomethane. Even in well water, okay, which comes out of the most pristine well you can think of, still has a couple of atoms of carbon floating around there. We still have to disinfect it, and it still depends on how long it takes to get to those extremities in the system.
So, obvious question is, when did you all learn about this water quality violation?
Put my word out.
We put a notice on the webpage on September twenty-third, which is even more, has more of an explanation than the tier-two notice, even though that's on the website today. We put something out on the webpage, or on our website on the twenty-third of September.
Thank you. So, is that how you found out? You found out reading the city website on September twenty-third? Or had you been briefed on this prior, prior to, prior to that public notification?
I don't, I was away. I think somebody sent me, so I think there was a mail extension to each councilperson. I don't know what's the date on it, but I was not at my home to receive it at the time, so... Did anybody know when the date was and they got the...
I believe the, I'm sorry.
I believe the water director issued a memo on the twentieth to city council members.
Thank you.
Okay, so that means the night of the twenty-first, the council knew about it. And when we had that whole discussion about different water contamination, nobody brought it up? Is that fair to say?
I wasn't here, Mr. Cradwell, I just said it, so... I wasn't here.
And respectfully, why'd you miss the meeting where we're...
[laughing] Is this real or what?
Serious.
Oh, so you're serious? You're asking me why I missed the meeting?
Yeah, yeah. And I'm serious about this issue. This is the policy, this is the...
Now, we just give them a call in three minutes.
Yes, sir.
In all fairness to the board, they, they got the notice like right before the meeting.
And, you know, trihalomethanes, it's really not something that's easily explained, especially because the way the form, you know, you're using words that don't, you know, people aren't necessarily familiar with, but, I mean, to make it as simple as I can, it's carbon, it's chlorine. But it's, you know, it's three carbons. And so, it does take a bit of explanation, which, you know, it's an education that anybody that's, that's not in the water profession, really, it takes a little bit of time to explain it.
Okay, and I think that's, thank you for that. I think that precisely proves my point, that this ought to be discussed by default. You know, I shouldn't have to come up here and ask, hey, what about the water quality violation? This should be something that should be talked about. You know, when it happens, as soon as the information's available, it should be shared at these meetings. I think the council should want to know this information, but that's a theme that I've brought up before, and I still show up and I see nothing under items of discussion, no reports from departments, or really, no updates even on community events that are coming up or anything. Just you're just blow through the agenda and hurry out of here, and I don't think that's, you know, really what you're supposed to do. So, the water thing aside, do you, I know, Council President Egan, you've said that you do not respond to emails. Can other three councilmembers tell me, do they also have a policy of being non-responsive to constituent emails that you receive?
Anybody like to answer, Mr. Cradwell?
I respond to constituent emails, but you said you're a reporter, and that's arguable in some areas. So, I respond right away to constituent emails. I don't have a problem with that. But when I feel like I'm being interrogated, there's a difference. Constituent services is one thing when you're being interrogated, and I don't feel like, you know, one way or the other. It depends.
So, you don't think I'm a constituent of yours?
No, you, you gotta make up your mind what you're gonna be. You introduced yourself as a reporter from New Brunswick today, but then, when we say something to you, then you become a constituent. You're trying to wear two hats.
I've always been a constituent.
Can I finish? Can I finish?
Sure.
You're trying to wear two hats at one time. If you want to be treated like a reporter, which you introduced yourself as, we will, I treat you like a reporter. Now, you say you're a constituent because you want somebody to respond to you right away. So, just let's decide which one you wanna be.
You know, you know who I am? I'm the, I'm the reason that you're talking about this.
No, actually, you're...
You would not have talked about this tonight if I made you a reporter.
See, this is, this is the absurdity that we talked about. Just like we talked about last week, when you asked us why we are paying for a lawsuit that you are suing the city. And then, you complain about wasting taxpayers' money, when you were a catalyst for wasting taxpayers' money. That's the absurdity. So, decide which one do you wanna be? When you wanna be a reporter, which you introduced yourself as, you didn't say, Charles Cradwell, whatever ward, you said reporter from New Brunswick today.
I owe the ward too, sir.
Huh?
I owe the ward too. I'm a resident. I've been a resident for...
But you didn't say that, Ted. But that's not what you said.
It's disgusting that you would disavow me as a constituent, sir.
Okay, okay. Now, I'm...
Because of my job.
No, I'm disavowing you as a reporter now.
Okay, then treat me like a constituent. Do you respond as a constituent?
Now, this is sounding kind of, this is a little, now, I'm not even gonna disparage people that have real issues with that. But I'm saying, it just doesn't even make sense that now, you wanna flip off one hat and put on another hat. That's how you wanna be treated? You said that you are a reporter from New Brunswick today. That's how you wanna write yourself. For the record, that's how you introduced yourself.
Yes, in the interest of transparency, I told you my role at New Brunswick today, sir. Now, you're holding it against me and using that as an excuse not to answer questions. It's disgraceful.
All right.
It is. You're, you're really embarrassed. It's beneath the law, sir.
Exactly.
You, you, you're disavowing one of your constituents because I am who I am. I, I write the articles I write.
No, no. I said, either you're a reporter or you wanna be a constituent. Who did you introduce yourself as?
What law are you citing? What law is that? Where's the law that you have to be a reporter?
I'm saying journalistic ethics. Journalistic ethics. People don't make themselves apart, and then all of a sudden, write a story on themselves.
Tell me, tell me what journalistic ethics you're citing. What, I went to school for journalism, sir. I got a degree in journalism.
Congratulations.
So, maybe you can tell me what, what you're citing.
And I teach law every day.
I'm sorry, what?
And I teach law every day.
You teach law?
Yes.
Okay. And what law are you citing then?
Once again, you came and you introduced yourself as a journalist. You said, I'm a reporter from New Brunswick today.
That's not...
I was giving you the benefit of the doubt.
So, I'm not your constituent anymore?
We're gonna change hats again?
I'm not, I'm just...
I'm sorry, I'm not sure about that.
You have dodged your questions and you're using...
I'm not sure about that.
You're not... You don't know, you're signing your... If you're gonna call me out for journalism, maybe you could answer the question for everybody else in New Brunswick who cares about clean water.
Now, everybody else in New Brunswick doesn't get up and introduce themselves as a reporter, and then change hats, and then become all of a sudden a constituent. That's the absurdity.
Do you ever wear multiple hats?
What?
Don't you work for a board of education?
Yes, I do.
Which board?
But I made it up here and say, uh, Hamilton teacher. I work for Hamilton proudly for the last...
You have boards, yes. Many times.
Proudly for the last twenty years.
Okay. So, you wear different hats too, sometimes?
But I don't get up here and introduce myself as two different people.
I didn't, I didn't do that, sir. I'm the same Charlie I was. I've known you for...
I'm going to practice, I'm going to practice, once again, environmental protection. I'm not going to waste oxygen anymore.
Yeah, I agree, man. So, how about you tell us about Travis Holfish, Dell Walker, and Richard Patterson? Which of them are still suspended? And what's their current status?
Could you repeat that, sir?
Travis Holfish, water utility employee. Is he currently working for the city or is he suspended?
He is actively employed.
Actively employed.
Mr. Walker is still suspended without paying. Mr. Patterson was terminated.
Patterson terminated. Mr. Walker, were you able to confirm that he was arrested again?
The newspaper says so.
Okay. Well, council should have more respect for reporters and everybody else who cares about the city of New Brunswick. You're only here twice a month, and when somebody comes and they have legitimate questions, you shouldn't treat them like dirt.
Thank you, Mr. Cradwell. Who else would like to address the council? Yes, ma'am?
Hi, Danielle Moore, one eighty-eight Rockford Street. First, I would like to start off with, I believe it's Officer Eddie Morgaga. I'm not pronouncing it correctly. He's the officer that's been working on Livingston and Delavan. He's doing a great job. And also, where he's the witness of Lee Avenue and Delavan, where last week, he was helping the crossing guards out due to where you have a very thick situation, not on the side of the school, but the other side, where this is only basically for one, it's, it's supposed to be two lanes, but as the way the cars have been parking around, it's only one lane, and it's been a really close call where I have pictures to show. It's creating a big problem for the crossing guard there due to where a lot of people are trying to make a right turn, but if someone's in the aisle already, in the lane already, no one cannot make a turn due to where you have plenty of people who are parking there, and it's being a big situation for the crossing guard. You had so many close calls. And like I said, he can be the witness of it due to where he tried it with the cones, but that's still not helping, due to where this is almost like a one, a one-way street when it comes to the corner. So, I hope that the city can respond to trying to fix something there soon because, like I said, it's been very dangerous right there, where it's supposed to be a two-way, but basically, it's only like a one-way. Then also, that's with Lee, Delavan, and Lee and Comstock. That was where about six weeks ago, I was told that, okay, the job that's supposed to be done doing with the lighting system, that was where you said that, wow, that if they wasn't able to respond in a certain amount of time, that you were gonna let that company go and find someone else. That was approved back in November. This is almost a year now, by next month. So, can you please tell me that you find a new contractor or what's gonna be done?
Mr. Cradwell, please. When we terminate the contract, we're gonna have to rebid the project. It's gonna delay it by several months. There's no, there's no legal recourse on that.
So, so you did, uh...
We have not terminated yet, but we're in the process of starting that.
Okay, thank you. And then also, with the, with the board of education, that's where I hope the city will speak up to the board of education about their sidewalks. And I mean, in very dangerous situation, that's on Livingston Avenue side, excuse me, Livingston School side between Sanford and Delavan, where I meant these sidewalks. I know you give tax, other taxpayer fines for not doing their sidewalks, but what about the board of education? So, I hope you will speak up to them and make their sidewalks where no one is tripping over. I will let you have the pictures. Or...
Give them a bird.
And then also, one thing, I don't know, believe me, I know someone watches the news, where, wow, a good example, what I was talking about, what a person in a wheelchair was on the news past couple of days. I forget what town it was, it wasn't nowhere around, but a good example, wow, the news crew was out there with a woman due to where she's in a wheelchair, due to where she cannot come down her block, due to where, wow, the city doesn't take care, but wow, the city can give other, other residents fines for not doing their sidewalk, but what about the city not taking care? The responsibility of doing the curbs with what they're supposed to do. So, I would like to know what is gonna be done, like I said, with Lee and Lawrence Street, where, I mean, these are high curbs. Like I said, I turned in a whole CD of how bad these curbs are. Like I said, a person in a wheelchair cannot get through. So, please tell me, are you gonna put a claim in to have something done soon?
I believe we are, Mr. Loughlin.
Since the last meeting and Ms. Moore's concerns about that location, I went up and down Lee Avenue and looked at every intersection and every intersection from at least Sanford heading out of town, I'll say, in the westerly direction towards North Brunswick, there were depressed curbs on all four legs of the intersection, except for some reason, that Lee and Lawrence. I've asked the engineering office to correct that as soon as they can.
We're right on it. We're gonna put them in, Ms. Moore.
Well, actually, I do see more than just Lee and Lawrence. Maybe I'll bring the pictures back to you every, every corner. That, that's the most one that has never been touched, but believe me, you still have some that aren't approved for a wheelchair to go up. So, I guess I will bring you the picture of all the corners that I've left to know how you say they're approved and they're not.
I didn't say they were approved, but they're...
You said they were cut out for wheelchairs.
At each, at each location, the sidewalks do grade down to the street elevation. Not where, not all of them were the handicap curb that you see around the downtown or that you would expect. I fully would acknowledge that there's other work to do, but Lee and Lawrence, for some reason, has no depressed curves whatsoever on all four legs of the intersection.
Thank you. Mr. Cradwell, do you want to say something? Yes, one point, Ms. Moore. Some of the intersections on Lee have telephone poles, so there are at least three crosswalks established. So, if someone's coming down one lane, they can cross and then cross and cross back, but because of the location of telephone poles precluded the ability to add four crosswalks at each intersection. Each intersection has at least a minimum of three crosswalks.
Oh, yes, I understand that, which I can tell you which street that Lee and Townness, Lee and Lawrence, but that still have nothing. I'm not talking about the crosswalk. I'm talking about even all the, I don't know the rich way to say it, all the way around is the thick curb. Like I said, what? It's like you're walking up the stairs or something. So, it's not about the telephone poles to stop the city from redoing the curbs so a wheelchair can go up. Like I said, maybe I'll, I'll be back through to show you every corner where I would like to say that you approved that a wheelchair can go up. But like I said, I would...
I'd like to add a comment. Just as a note of the record, the city's applied to municipal aid five times for Lee Avenue and it's been denied. We generally get one or two projects here. We've gotten only one project for the last three years, but Lee has been denied five times. So, we've tried to address it in the past. It's now coming up with a funding mechanism to do the whole street, and it's quite honestly, it's astronomical, so...
So, did it, was it approved? Because see, this is a situation, I will let you go somewhere, one week, one meeting, you're here, and then next, next meeting... And then next, and then next, uh, meeting that, uh, sir, you are, you are here. And then where one tells me this and the other one tells me something different.
He's the same guy as you, yeah?
No, no, uh, excuse, excuse me. At the last meeting, this gentleman was here, uh, and, uh, this gentleman was not. Like I said, one said one thing and the other one said different due to where what we talked about at the last meeting. That was where I said, wow, why do you have to wait till the government approves to do these sidewalks? And what, with some of these other sidewalks, we don't have to go get, uh, get, get money from the government? That was the situation where we talked about at the last meeting. That was when you, you were, you were not here. So see, one says one and the other says an, a, another thing. So that, that shows where somebody's not communicating with each other. So, uh, so yes, where would you, so what is going to be done?
Well, I, I did say at the last meeting that we do every year make application for money from the state of New Jersey, which is known as Transportation Trust money. And we repave and redo the sidewalks and curb cuts on the large, major thoroughfare in town. Um, we've just been approved recently for Joyce Kilmer. I think from Patterson to Sanford or something like that.
Yeah.
Um, okay. Um, but nonetheless, I think I said at the last meeting, uh, we're not going to wait around for state money to cause the improvements at Lee and Lawrence. We're going to look to our resources within. And again, I've asked the, the engineering office if they would...
So definitely, we're going to cut the, we're going to cut the corners in on Lee and Lawrence? That, that, we're not going to wait for no public money? We're going to do it with our in-house money to do that.
Our, our own public money.
Our own public money. Be all right.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
About that, going to New Jersey.
Thank you.
All right, few concerns. First, I want to, um, say that you're incorrect about your statement that you said to Charlie when you said that, um, you said Mr. Hamilton's been here for God knows how many years. And ever since he's been here, people have been coming up with lawsuits for the police every meeting. That's not so much I give them this in other municipalities. It's not custom for other municipalities to pay attorney fees for police officers. So I mean, I think you're painting the wrong picture. So it's something abnormal in New Brunswick. And you don't make a broad statement about everybody, this is the way it goes, this is what happens. That's not what happens everywhere else. I go to different municipalities. They don't pay for attorney fees for officers being sued for whatever type of conduct that transpired, whether it's true or false. It's not epidemic nowhere else. Whether this, whether people are making false claims or not, why is it only New Brunswick making false claims? So you're wrong when you're saying this is what happens. That's not what happens. This is only what happens here.
That's what I was saying. You know, I was talking about New Brunswick. I wasn't talking about any other municipalities.
Okay, well, I'm telling you, other municipalities, it don't take place. So being that it doesn't take place, maybe you should spend time in other municipalities. What is New Brunswick going to do about an epidemic? Because it's abnormal. If it's not going out throughout the entire country, this is something abnormal here. And what is New Brunswick planning to do about this abnormal, I guess, abnormality? If that's a word?
I don't have an answer to your question. Does anybody have an answer?
We're going to follow the law.
What's the law?
Well, we have an obligation to provide a defense to officers who are charged with...
Dad, don't cheat. Don't cheat. Don't cheat. I'm telling, I'm not asking about the law. I'm asking about an epidemic.
A lot of control is in the courts, so I'll defer on that.
Okay. Well, this is an epidemic. And what bothers me is the questioning. Because, you know, a lot of times you guys never have an answer. And you got a mean team. You guys got an A-plus team. I've been coming here for five years and I've watched you every time. You take notes on everything that transpired. You take notes every meeting. But still, when it come backtrack, do you guys communicate? When I'm sitting here, I watch, I watch, I watch the baseball signals. As you guys give each other, I watch all of that. But, but you got, he takes notes every meeting. Do you ever walk over and look at his notepad after the council meeting?
I take notes for my benefit to follow up and make sure something that was discussed at meeting one has been addressed by meeting two. Just like Ms. Moore's concerns about Lee and Lawrence.
You should be taking notes for the community's benefit, not your benefit. So, and if it, if it's something that you took down, if it's something that you took down and you think it's of importance, you should discuss it with the council. That's, that's my personal opinion. I think it should be discussed with the council. And you know when he takes notes, you should ask, let me see, let me see what transpired. What did these guys say or what situation took place? I think you should go over to him and look at his notes. Outside of that, there's a defect of government. Okay? I'll proceed. I want to know, um, there's an incident that transpired. And being that I take, it seemed like when I take days off for council meetings, it seemed like something was happening forced me to come in. I don't know, you know, I'm not, I would never take off permanently. But, you know, I'm, I'm occupied with other things. But, you know, um, a situation happened that I understood that really truly upset me. It's kind of personal. And before I get to the situation, I'd just like to know, how long has Officer Jones and Del Faco been on the police force?
Captain, do you know how long, what was your officer's name?
Jones and Del Faco, if that's the correct names.
Do you have an idea? Do you know how long?
I don't know off the top of my head.
Give it to me, give me an estimation.
I'm not going to guess.
Not going to guess?
No.
All right, left on, okay, not going to guess. Um, situation transpired, he, he kind of has an idea. And it's sad that the captain has no idea when officers were, uh, present. But, um, a situation transpired about a week ago. Um, I got a disturbing phone call from a, a family member. She's my aunt. My grandfather's sister. She's 70 years old. She's a lifelong New Brunswick resident. Out of those 70 years, she didn't spend a, a month outside of New Brunswick. Went through the school system, devoted taxpayer. Well, everything, everything you could think of as a citizen. And she was disrespected by the police officer. And, um, the thing is, the, she, she's told me the officer demeanor, which and I know, I know a lot of their demeanor, I know a lot of their corruption is government sanctioned. And, and I, I, I know that you do support the corruption because a corrupt officer does create revenue. I get that. But for an officer, a young officer, to disrespect a female in her 70s, she told me she felt like she almost, he almost wanted to provoke her into an altercation. And she's old enough to be his mother. And my, my problem was the entire process outside of that. You know, and I, I told her, I gave her a little talk. I said, you know, Auntie, I'll tell you one thing. This, when it never took place for the Caucasian woman by St. Peter's Hospital. She called, this is the reason why she called the police. Get this. And this is the rea, I don't know why you have to, but this is the reason why she called the police. She paid to have a handicap parking space put in front of her house. She lives off of Repson Avenue. And when someone, and when someone parks in her space, as, as a 70-year-old has a bad hit, I was going to bring her here, but she, her hit, she had issues with her hit and she's on a cane, so she couldn't come. So she paid for parking space. Paid the city of New Brunswick. You guys! And when someone parks in her space, she has to park up the street and then walk home. Now, it's getting darker, it's getting dark earlier. You know, so I don't, I'm not comfortable with my 70-year-old walking from a parking down, down the streets to her home. But she's not a person that calls and complains. But just this one day, she had grocery bags with her. And if she had to park, she would park almost by Feaster's Park. So she called the police. And she said, you know, there's someone in my parking space. Took them about hours to change to get to her. You know, um, but they eventually, an officer came with a disrespectful demeanor, as if she did something wrong. She said, nephew, I've never been talked to like that in my life by law enforcement agent. That's my favorite one. She said, you know, um, officer, she said, uh, what's going to take place? Don't worry about it, I'm just, I'm going to do my job. I don't know if it was Del Faco or, can you explain, which one was it? Who was, who was driving?
I don't know. I wasn't there.
You don't care?
He didn't say he was there.
Over here, please. Listen, listen. Okay, let me, let, let, let me get to it. All right, listen. So, said in a disrespectful manner, well, she did something right. What was she supposed to do? Stay double parked and she get a ticket?
Everything you tell me she did, she did right.
Yeah.
She did right.
So why, you know, and, and, and the officer, you know, for never got out of the car, she, you know, she, she expressed, she said she was a little, she was, she was definitely intimidated. So the officer, um, said a few things in a threatening manner to her. She can express a little more, but he said a few things in a threatening manner. And she just, I guess she just went to, went to the house. And, um, later on, she contacted me. I went straight to Internal Affairs. And, um, I filed a complaint for her. She didn't want to come down and file a complaint.
So there's your complaint filed.
Uh, yeah, I, I filed a complaint. Now, the process of that, I think we need to, uh, teach your officers law. Because, um, they ask you to file, sign a paper. When you, when you're filing a internal, when you're filing a internal affairs complaint, they ask you to file a, uh, paper stating that the information that you're given is accurate. And that's not, that's against Attorney General's guidelines. Because they, they basically said in John Langley, and I would like to know when the last time, he had a psychic evaluation. But he told me I had to, you know? I mean, I know, I know that you guys both, you, you guys are proud of this, uh, uh, rogue police officer. But, you know, I, I know he moved, I know he moved up in ranks being a racist police officer. But he still needs to have some type of code of conduct. You know, um, you have to sign a statement stating that the information that you're giving is accurate. That's not, that's not, that's against Attorney General's guidelines. I don't have to fi, sign anything. And I was trying to explain to him, you know, you can file an internal affairs complaint, third person anonymously. So if I have to file something anonymously, what would I be signing? So I'm trying to teach him. But his, you know, his arrogance, because, you know, I would be arrogant too if I was a racist cop that moved up in ranks. His arrogance allowed him not to even e- accept the information. But I filled out the, uh, internal affairs complaint. And, um, what was more upsetting was when I spoke to my aunt, she said she reached out to the mayor's office and someone would contact her. No one has contacted her yet. And this has been a weakness of change though. She reached out to Kevin Jones and he gave, you know, the, uh, the clown number where it's already, the voicemails are filled up. And, you know, he tells everybody, give me a call if you have an issue. And then the voicemail's filled up. So she contacted Kevin Jones, she contacted the mayor. No one reached back out to him. Now, what's disheartening is, that Tuesday prior to the officer disrespecting her, she was at a senior's picnic with the mayor president on Tuesday. She, you know, she, she, she came to the senior's picnic and I'm sure that a police, any officer there wouldn't have disrespected her in that manner. There's no way a police officer would have disrespected a lifelong city resident. I'm trying to find out, where, where is this, where are these guys from? Where they, where they being imported from? Because I guarantee you, I don't know this, I guarantee you, Del Faco and, uh, Officer Jones is not, did not graduate from New Brunswick High School. They didn't go for the school system. They never coached Pop Warner Little League sports in New Brunswick. They never did any community advocacy work that, when they weren't on the clock. But they do, but they have come out in our community and disrespect lifelong residents. I'm not talking about them bogus pictures you have police officers take with kids around while they're being paid. I'm talking about when you're off duty and you have a compassion for the community and you come and do volunteer work. That's what I'm talking about. Not them phony, lonely pictures that you post with children at community events with the officer while they're getting a paycheck. I guarantee you, none of these officers do any community work. And the problem I have is that going through disrespecting, I'm not even going to say seniors, black seniors. Because I, 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 in my, deep in my heart, I believe if she was a Caucasian 70-year-old, he would have not disrespected her like that. And I know that for a fact. I know this police department is racist. And I hate that my aunt had to experience it, but you guys are going to have to experience the wrath that I'm going to give you guys. Because I said, that's my favorite one. I don't come in with personal issues. But that's my grandfather's sister. And, 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 and being that she was disrespected, I'm not going to miss another council meeting probably for a year. And any police issue that anybody has to bring up, I'm going to address it. Any corruption, anybody that I have to bring up, I'm going to address it just to put it on record. I know you won't change. I prob, I know you will never change. The corruption will never change. But my goal is, I have children. I have children that are grown up. And you have children, I'm sure. A lot of you guys have children. And I don't, everyone, any of you corrupt people with children, I don't want your children to ever look, go back in history and think that the quality of their life that was given to them was given openly and honestly. I want them to know that it was given to them by a corrupt, per, per parent. I want them to know that their parent was corrupt. They stole their, they stole a quality of life of one child to give it to theirs. I just want them to know that. So as long as it's documented, I'm comfortable with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else that can address the council this evening? Anybody else that can address the council? Step right up to the microphone.
Hi, uh, my name is Mona. I live on 105 Huntington Street. And I have a question prior, like I have two questions. One is, do we actually have a limit on how many lawsuits we do to get, like, how many, the limit of how many lawsuits the city pays for to represent, uh, officers who have been in different lawsuits?
No, I don't believe so, no.
So they can, like, multiple cases can be brought up against them and it will be like, no?
Correct.
Okay, and for the second question, earlier was brought up that there was a person who worked for the city who is now being sued for unlawful termination of different people? Or they just...
Punitive damages against the administrator.
Yeah, and the attorney, if I heard correctly, said that the person is being sued in his professional capacity and personal capacity?
Correct.
So is the city also representing him on his personal capacity? Or is it, was it two different lawsuits being represented by two different people?
The city is, is paying for his, uh, his representation on the personal side. And the city is representing everybody through the JIF fund or whatever, or maybe not through the JIF fund, on the, everybody, I don't know.
Somebody is sued. When someone is sued in your official capacity, okay, that means with respect to their duties and responsibilities in the course of their employment. If a lawsuit sues someone personally, um, that person has personal exposure. But when the conduct or the actions during the course of their duty and responsibilities as city administrator in this particular case, then the city owes that particular person in defense.
Thank you.
Because the, the lawsuit arises out of city-related business.
Thank you.
Allegedly.
And, last question. Uh, when a city, when a, uh, police officer is being reported to Internal Affairs, I know that other places to make sure that all, everything is smoothly and then the citizens are represented, uh, in the right manners. They bring in an external, uh, attorney to look into things. So it's not gone completely to people that have to work within the system? Is New Brunswick the same? Or is it people who work with officers, who are friends with officers investigating their own fights?
Well, you just, it's the latter one.
Hmm?
We have, we, we used to have the county involved in it, but we don't have a third. Internal investigation is done through internal investigation. It's cops investigating other cops, just like you said. That's the way it is in New Brunswick.
Is there a way we can change it?
Well, we go by the Attorney General guidelines in the state. And, uh, uh, some, some people call for a, uh, what is it? What's the term?
Civilian Review Board.
Civilian Review Board.
And are we setting up one of those? Do we have it already? Is it being considered? Was it already shut down?
Uh, people have brought it up before, but, uh, we, we've never considered, we've never considered that. I believe in New Brunswick, that I know.
So what can we do as citizens to make it considered?
Mr. Fanning, uh, what's, what's the law on that?
Well, the Civilian Review Board has no power over a particular officer. In other towns and cities throughout the country that have enacted it. Um, they're basically a hearing panel that can make recommendations, to my knowledge. It's the Internal Affairs Department within a police department that could actually take punitive action against an officer who strays outside the code of conduct of an officer. And ultimately, the county prosecutor's office has authority over the police department to take any criminal action that they deem appropriate in the case of police misconduct.
So, we know that hasn't worked. Like documented all across the country that bad apples in the police, like, officers community is just been, like, going over from one system to another. And with all respect to police officers, I still call them when I get in trouble. Why aren't civilians being allowed to have a say in this? It's servant protect, it's my taxpayers' money at the end of the day. I have to represent them when they do something wrong in the court of New Brunswick and ultimately pay their, like, pensions and pay their, like, salaries every month. So why isn't this being considered for something for the well-being of New Brunswick citizens?
Are you a taxpayer in New Brunswick?
Yes. I work here too, so I live here, work here.
What's your, what's your street address?
Uh, 105 Huntington Street. It's McCaskey Street from the library.
Okay. So, uh, you know, people have brought this up to us, you know, but, you know, uh, we feel in New Brunswick that the internal investigations, for the most part, has been doing a good job in the city of New Brunswick. Obviously, there's people here that don't feel that way. People feel that they're, uh, excluded, it's, it's not a fair system. And, uh, you know, that's, that's the way, that's, that's our feelings here in New Brunswick.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to address the council this evening? Anybody else?
Good afternoon. 173 Ruppert Street, New Brunswick. I was here the last time about the kids on Lee Avenue. They hadn't been approved, cause I had a chance to talk with the young guys. Plus the police department did a mob job. And then they cut down a tree, but they didn't put it back.
What, you need to want, you, they cut a tree down and they just bring it one back?
No, I ain't put one back.
What's your address?
173 Ruppert Street, but it's on, it's on Lees Drive.
Did you write that down?
Maybe my truck...
It's already been written down. I think it's their intention to replace it.
Did you, that tree was disapproved, garbage, was disapproved, shrubbed, trees?
Maybe my truck in the way, if, if I gotta move my truck, I'll use my...
Go let you know, go post it. We'll get you, we'll get you. We'll go, go, put the thing up, you know, I don't want you...
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else this evening? Anybody else like to address the council this evening? Anyone else? Seeing nobody else.
I just wanna say something real quick.
Sure.
And, and I'm too glad that he left. I was just empathizing with Mr. Fanning and I would be upset if something like that would happen to a family member. But I also wanna clarify a statement that he made that I think personally is a little bit unfair. I do know police officers that are out there not getting paid, doing artillery, stand doing things in their community. So I think it's, it's unfair to say that they don't, because they do and I'm the witness. I just wanted to make that clear. It's unfair to say that.
Thank you, Mrs. Fanning. That is very true. Anybody else?
One other thing, sir, and you probably have heard about a, uh, uh, an oil spill in Milltown into the mill pond as part of the, uh, uh, demolition that's happening over on Ford Avenue.
Yes, sir.
That is, uh, a, uh, small section of our secondary water source. And we have, we have stopped pumping, uh, out of the, uh, Farrington Lake. And we will not resume again until, uh, we have clearance from the DDP that there is no further issue with, uh, that source of water. But it's been boomed off. Uh, there was a restoration company out there today. Um, and we have been given advice that we think the cleanup will have been, uh, completed by Friday. Uh, but you should know that we have not been pumping water since we were advised of...
And when were you, when were, when were you first advised?
Yesterday.
Time, give a time?
I think Mr. Lavenberg does, but I don't remember.
Thank you.
One more.
Yes.
Um, October, as we know, is, uh, first council awareness month. Um, I know the fire department is doing something and a lot of other departments are wearing pink. And just personally, it's not about just wearing pink. It's about people getting tested and encouraging relatives to get tested. Personally, in my family, I had a sister who by the time she got tested, she was already at the last stages. And, you know, at thirty-two years old, she was gone. You know, she was gone.